Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Being six thirty, we'll start the Wednesday, October twenty sixth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Westminster Select Board. Any adjustments to the agenda at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to acceptance of minutes, October twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, motion to accept the minutes.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded to accept the minutes of October twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
Close? I always should rephrase myself since I'm not here, so. Craig is refusing himself since he was not here.
Yep.
Motion carries four. With one.
Yep.
Communications and public comment. Yes.
Hi, I'm Michelle Tchamora, I'm on the planning commission. And I just wanted to come to the meeting to let everyone know that we're having a forum, a housing forum, on Tuesday, November fifteenth, at the Institute. And we're gonna go over topics like elder care, housing, or elder housing, tiny homes, cluster developments, and second home investment property type issues. And we hope that, you know, if anyone's interested in coming, that, you know, you come and we'll report back with what we find out from that meeting.
Okay, what was the date again?
It's the fifteenth, November fifteenth, it's a Tuesday.
And the time?
Six thirty.
Thank you.
Here.
At the Institute. Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other communications and public comments? Thank you. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business, material trash, recycling update. Ally had emailed me earlier and said that Joe would not be able to make it. Would be like to be on the first November meeting, which is November ninth, so we'll table that for now. So moving on from A, we'll go to B, FEMA Fire Department.
I don't have much of an update, other than we're still trying to follow money.
Trying to figure it out?
Trying to figure it out.
Okay.
We have more people involved at the state level now, and that's where we're at, basically.
Can we just, can you just, no, no, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm trying to follow my, that they say they paid.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's the state of FEMA or federal, Jessica Roderick, so it's FEMA, said that monies have been obligated to the fire department for a total of four thousand seventy-three dollars and seventy-three cents to the state.
Yep. And then they take a portion, right? That rests a couple meetings back, okay, great, thank you.
It is somewhere.
Work and progress schedule?
Yes.
Table at this time?
Yes, please.
Good. No, no problem. So we'll move on to C, manager finance update. Ally was not able to make it tonight, we've had a couple of interviews. And that's where we're at with that, some pretty good candidates, we'll discuss that later. Unless anybody else has anything else on manager finance update? Alright, conflict of interests.
So at the last meeting, I submitted the additional definitions that are to be applied. Everybody has them. I would recommend, Chair, that we have one more, you know, let them, let everyone sit on it for for the next meeting, but the next meeting, I think we should vote to take actions, because we've had enough time and all the, everyone has the specific definitions that were added, so if there's any objections that people have, concerns with them, they can make them at this time.
Okay.
But I think we're ready to go to make a, put our conflict of interest policy in place.
Alright, we'll table that till the next meeting.
For the definitive decision.
Okay. Alright, anything else under conflict of interest? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Highway equipment replacement schedule, I asked the highway to just give us a brief, which was a ton of information that they sent, but of what's coming up for replacement. As far as vehicles and equipment. And how we're, I know we handle a lot of, most of our maintenance in-house, and just a kind of a brief of where we're at and what we've got coming up, and what we think that those prices, not maybe not necessarily prices, but range is gonna be, and do we need to start looking now, so we can have something when we need it?
As far as trucks coming up, truck number six is due next year, the next fiscal year.
That's another ten we like?
Yes, that's a tandem, yep.
Okay. And then? So that's gonna be an expensive one?
That'll be an expensive one, okay.
You're trading in a tandem, though, right?
Correct.
Well, if you're trading a big one for a big one, it's not gonna be that bad.
No, it should pretty much wash itself out.
It's probably less than the six-wheeler V for a six-wheeler, just so you know. There's not much difference now between the price of a six-wheeler again, but there's a big difference in the trade value. That's really the difference we're doing now.
Okay.
That's about the only major equipment coming up for twenty-four.
For twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay.
There may be some small incidentals throughout the year, but nothing, nothing like that.
So if this truck two, that's the one we're doing now?
Hmm, truck three.
Three. Why is truck two sitting there being the same year, is this my question?
There was something.
Do you want to say?
Two and three swapped. Two was fiscal year twenty-two, three was fiscal year twenty-three. And they just swapped.
That was the year that we went out of that.
Because we didn't wanna have two tandems back to back, so last year was a single axle, this year's a tandem.
But I'd like to see, is you take the truck and put them on the seven-year cycle we talked about? And what's wrong with this is model year, and sometimes the way that I've been selling the trucks is basically the model year could be off. You could be getting one that was actually before you should have gotten it, and then next time it's a leftover, so many times it was two thousand sixteen that really not, they weren't purchased the same year, they just had to be the same model year.
Right.
So I'd like to see if you could do a schedule where you take all the trucks and put them on the seven-year cycle that we know this truck, this, when is seven years out? Does that, I think, we go back, and I think every one of the trucks now have a seven-year warranty on.
To an extent, yes. So there are some things that aren't quite there, but.
Right, yeah. Then it would be off, like, when did you buy it, when is it seven years later, and that's when we should be scheduling the trade.
Right. What, what typically happened in the past was to get a truck and say that we're gonna get it for this price, and we're gonna, next year, we'll buy the extended warranty for twenty-five hundred dollars or whatever, and then forget to do it. So, then we got a truck with a five-year warranty instead of a seven-year warranty, because we never went back and, you know, and I didn't know about this until after.
And what's happening now is the government came in, so it's that with this year, they call CARB twenty-two. So now the government came along and said, hey, listen, we found out it's like tires, you have to have, you were supposed to be giving these people an after treatment warranty for five years, which we weren't, but you were buying it. So now, in the price of truck went up, because they don't have to give it to you, they just gotta charge.
They have to.
You got no choice, you're gonna get it, so now you're getting a CARB twenty-two, which is god, well, I say seventeen hundred dollars. But it doesn't do you any good if you don't buy the extended warranty, because you're not getting it. But yet, we've charged you in the price, so now at a hundred percent of the trucks I sell, everybody buys the extended warranty, because it only makes sense, you've already paid for some of it.
Right.
You might as well get it, you know?
Right, yeah.
So that's why the seven years of criteria is the fact that you guys don't put any mileage. So to the common person that does five hundred thousand miles in seven years, and you're doing a hundred, it's a real good deal. It's fooling not to ever buy it, because it covers everything. So that's why I said it's important not to have the trucks go eight years, but at least be on that schedule of, but the model year is throwing me off too, because.
Right, because you have one that's.
Well, I was gonna say, come January of this year, there's a model year twenty-four. Well, wait a minute, we haven't got the twenty-four, we haven't done twenty-three.
Not even in July, yet.
Right, so that's what throws you off, and they change it, sometimes they go, but this year is January. So you'll never have a twenty-four made in twenty-four, it's only made in twenty-three.
Right.
Definitely, so that's why, they could come back and just give me a schedule of when you purchase them. And then go out seven years, and then see how it matches back up again. Doesn't make sense?
Yep, thanks. Well, that's kind of what we're working on with a new number, too. Is it reflects the year that it's replaced. It's not necessarily the model year of the truck, but it is the fiscal year that we replace it.
Yeah, when you take the truck, the warranty starts from that day.
Can I ask a question about extending warranty? We had talked about the backhoe. We thought it, that we were gonna buy the extended at a later date, did we ever buy the extended at a later date?
We purchased it.
All we got is time to purchase.
It was into the final.
I'm pretty sure.
We've talked about it.
We need to go back and check.
I'll, I'll check that.
I have too many customers.
But I'm pretty sure we did that, because this is what we said was, we gotta stop doing that, it just doesn't make sense.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's, I'm pretty sure that's what.
I'll double, I'll double check to make you go over.
That's right.
Okay. So then, after the next, next year will be a ten-wheeler, then it looks like we got a one-ton?
Yes, we have a one-ton coming up in twenty-five.
Is that the dump or the flat?
Flat.
The seven, that's the flat?
Yep.
What do you, what do you think about when we get to that point, which I realize is a little bit down the road, but instead of having two one-ton dumps, we have a foreman's pickup in the dump, as a sec, they're two separate trucks? I, I ask that because I don't know as though we'll get back to seven full-time people, I don't know, if they exist. I'd like to see a foreman in his own, in a, in a foreman's truck versus riding around in your own truck, using your own pickup. Just something to think about.
Yeah.
In the past, that's the year you buy, because you're not spending that much money. So that's normally the year you buy your, your backhoe, or your excavator, or your loader. Is any, any of those coming up close to that schedule?
No, the.
All of them burnt up out, so they're gonna get to it?
Yeah. What's loader two do?
Loader two is tentative. That's one of those floating.
It's kind of, well, that's something that we need to think about.
That, that, I saw it there, and that's my question, is, as we get closer there, that would be the year to get the loader, because you're not hitting the town people up for that much money, you don't wanna get into that pickup.
Well, that's also an item that if you think you are gonna want one, it's not gonna be two months, and you're gonna get it, and you're gonna, you're gonna need to know well.
Why don't you come back to us with that, with a rough price, so that we know we're getting closer, then we get an idea budget-wise, what we asking each year? But there again, I'd hate to go to the voters and ask for two hundred one year, three hundred next year, and go back to two hundred. I'd rather ask for two twenty-five, or so, keep it even, in that budget, knowing that we're getting ready to buy that.
We'll kind of, thanks.
Any other questions on the minutes? Nope, I don't think, I mean, I don't think so. Unless anybody else has something specific?
Thanks for reading. Yeah, it's a time, yeah.
We, in June, went to a actual computer program for our maintenance records and in the past, we just had a book that we jotted things down, there was a book for every piece of equipment you worked on, that you jotted down, and now we've gone to this system where we actually scan all your all your receipts and everything, and it goes to that equipment, so you can easily.
It'll be about a year, and then those numbers will actually be very accurate, because right now, we still have a lot of old stock that.
The only thing that gets kind of funny is things like tires, tire chains, things like that, that you, you have, that you don't put a price to oil, you change the oil, you know, you used forty quarts of oil, but you don't put a price in there that goes with it, put a quart for.
On that bulk oil, you probably bought six, eight months ago.
That's correct, so that's, that kind of, that part of it becomes a little fuzzy when you probably track the cost to your vehicle, but but for the most part, it's a lot more accurate than it used to be.
Yep. Does it give you a warning when you?
Yes, so every, every Monday, we put all the hours and mileage into this program, takes, you know, fifteen minutes. So as it comes up, it needs inspection, or an oil change, or whatever, you know, hundred-hour service, or, you know, the graders coming up.
Four thousand.
Four thousand hour service. Pretty major service, but it throws a flag, hey, this is getting close. It goes from yellow to, you know, green, yellow, to red, whatever. So warns you ahead of time, so you can get filters and stuff coming in. Be ready for it, so. Pretty handy.
Yeah. Alright, so I guess if we can just double check and make sure that that warranty was purchased, and I think, now I'm thinking about it, I think that's how we, how we did it. But I know it was a lengthy discussion, whether we're gonna get it or the warranty.
Yep. And the problems, because I said, there's no guarantee that price that you were paying for that warranty is gonna be the same a year from now, too. And so you're better off the whole week. When it's.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. Anything else under highway equipment replacement schedule? Seeing nothing, none, we'll move on to B, new business, ARPA funds, what's allowed, discussion?
Paul, that's you. Paul, the next chair of the ARPA committee. And I'm gonna start it off with an email that's sent by the chair, it's me, Paul, the next chair, and pleasure. I'm gonna directly ask that the chair explain this email, before I say any more. The reason for its writing, and why it was sent.
That email is my, is my opinion. And that, and I own it, I sent it, and that's what it is. What, what more do you need to know, Paul?
I asked for an explanation, not whether it was your opinion. That's what I asked.
What, what part do you want me to explain? I don't have it in front of me.
Well, you obviously have a document here in the hand. That says something directly to this. And my understanding was you all did have.
I don't have a copy of it.
I can divide it if you forgot.
I don't have it.
The only thing we got is just, I had it here, and I don't, I don't see, I don't see his name anywhere, so I could do that for sure.
I, I am fully lost, so I, how I can take minutes, I don't know what you're talking about this video, well.
No, I'm not stunned by Kelly, I was told that this circulated beyond Kelly and I, to the heaven, all producer. You can make a comment, try to answer my question, and we can move forward. Fair?
Sure. You want me to read it, is that what you want me to do?
Sure.
Alright. Hello, all, not sure if this is the proper way to do this, but I'll give it a go. Going forward, if there are ARPA projects to be brought before the board for approval, I'm requesting that this be an agenda item versus being done under boards, committees, and commissions. I'm also requesting that any supporting documentation be provided in the select four packet, provided, provided with the warning, so everyone has time to review the project or prepare any question. I'll stop right there, and I'll explain that. That is, as the chair, that is a policy that I would like to see happen. If it's my agenda, and it's my meeting, then I'm gonna set it the way I want, and that's how I would like to see it. I don't, and I, to your, in your defense, when you responded back to me, I don't know where the instantaneous approval came from. I don't know where that came from. It doesn't matter to me where it came from, this is how I would like to move forward from that. I also remind the committee that there is no rush to spend the funds, nor is it intended to offset the budgets of departments within the town. I'll stop right there, and I'll explain that. From the outside looking in, it appears that, it doesn't just appear, fire and highways have gotten the majority, if not all, of that money that has been spent. I'm not saying it's right, I'm not saying it's wrong, that's my opinion. That is my opinion. If I'm out of line, let me know, and I'll go another route. Thank you, that's me. I think I explained it.
So you couldn't, you wouldn't say that that would give anybody that read that, including myself, that it was only sent to myself, and not the committee, not done in open session, like it should have been, begin with, that you feel rushed, you felt pressured, and that you feel there's an inside track to the monies, even though you now have a document in hand, again.
I do have that document, yep.
That says we are totally in line with those expenditures. And that the ARPA committee has maintained that. Myself, here in person, since I became a member and chair, yet you still sent that.
I have not seen any of this information in this packet before Wednesday, not one word of it.
Oh, I didn't, I submitted it.
Nor, nor can I, Paul, I'm not gonna get into a pissing matter, do you?
I'm not either, it's a discussion, so let's not take it there.
I'm not taking it, I answered the question, I answered your question.
So this is not, that is not a bolstering document that you sent. It doesn't help the committee, it doesn't help the process. It's accusational. So, so it's unfounded. So redacted.
I'm not gonna redact it, that's my opinion, I'm not gonna redact.
Okay, that says a lot.
Well, I need to know, what else do you need to know, Paul?
I don't really know, I have to send. Why did you send it like that? It's out, people are aware, yeah, this is what we're dealing with. Like I said, not a bolstering effect to a committee, that is trying to do what you asked it to do. You have information that shows we're doing it correctly.
I'm not sure how I need to tell you this. This information that you're talking about, I have not seen one word of these four pages until Friday or Monday morning.
Alright, let me ask you this. If your opinion still is at this time, that that's a founded opinion that you wrote, do you think there's any need for the committee? Do you wanna take it over?
I have, I want nothing to do with taking over any committee of any kind.
Then I'm gonna ask you not to send another email like that, but I'll send it to me.
I'll send nothing to anybody, no problem.
You have something, I've sat here in front of you, each meeting, that I could, that's, that's the time to bring that stuff out.
Okay.
Not through anyone.
Okay.
And hopefully you have the facts, before you do anything like that again. That's all I have to say.
Alright, anything else under ARPA funds, what's allowed? Seeing none, we'll move on to managers' report. Ally's not here, I have a written report from Ally. First, I apologize for not attending this meeting. Second is, the camp plumbing has installed the new boiler and hot water heater. I went down to check it out with Lucas, and I can say it looks straight. I can tell they took pride in their work, I welcome anyone to stop by and have a look. Lucas turned off the breaker that goes to the electric hot water heater, that is in the men's room, he explained it's more efficient to get our hot water from the boiler. HB propane, the HB propane tank has been removed, and the new propane, propane tank is functional. We only use the propane for our generator. I, Ally, will be helping with collections for a few hours on November eighth, don't forget to vote. The last meeting in November is eleven twenty-three, and is the night before Thanksgiving. I'm not available that evening, in the past, meetings have been removed, have been moved or canceled. I think it would be, be a good idea to have it out there now, for the good of the community. For the good of the community, what the plan is for that particular meeting. Eleven twenty-three, I guess I don't have any. I don't remember if it was canceled or moved, myself, but.
Sometimes we did that. Too close to Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
So we've done it on Tuesday night, or we moved it out to the last week, which would make it.
Twenty-nine.
Yeah.
I'm not, both, either way, it doesn't make a lot of difference to me, if there's people that are traveling or have things to.
If we move to the twenty-ninth, it has to be one of those months, we, we, we're gonna have a three weeks anyway, you see what I'm saying?
I do, yeah.
So it'll be the twenty-ninth of November, and then you'd be two weeks into, into the next month, before you'd have your first meeting, we'd be, where we would have been anyway, instead of being three weeks.
Whatever the board wants to do, doesn't matter.
Being that that time of year, let's initially do twenty-ninth, we can always, that next meeting canceled if we got nothing to do, but I assume we're gonna, we're gonna start working on the budget, so.
Okay.
So.
So the meeting's gonna be the twenty-ninth of November, not the twenty-third?
I'm only bringing that up once, one person, but yeah, I don't.
I don't know if you have to hold on it, or you're just gonna.
No, we didn't want to put it in the minutes.
Just put it.
Put it in the minutes that we're gonna move that meeting ahead of the twenty. Is it, oh, anybody agree?
For both meetings?
We're gonna cancel the twenty-third, we're moving to the twenty-ninth.
Cancel the twenty-third, move to the twenty-ninth, yes, okay.
Bring it another time, six thirty.
That's all we have for managers' report.
Can I ask a question, taxpayer?
Sure.
The last meeting, there were two bids for the boiler and hot water heater. And cold freezer was a little bid, I'm just wondering how that was decided, or if there was another bid submitted, or if it was changed?
It was solicited to four different people.
Right.
We only got back from two.
Yep.
It was the cost of the.
Extra hot water heater?
No.
There was liner?
Liner, sorry, yep, liner. And you need to pull a permit to do the job, and you need to have a license applying, like you used to do that.
But I wonder if she asked, and I wasn't there, she was.
That was, that was the, just how the decision came about, so cold freezer didn't get it because of what?
So the liner didn't get put in?
No, no, I got put in.
So it got put in, so it was a difference.
Five thousand dollars.
You had one bid without the liner, one with the liner.
I understood that, but I understood also that the liner didn't make the difference in the difference of the bid.
The difference with, if you added the same price of the liner, without it in front of me, it was like nineteen hundred dollars. It's still at the difference of like two, three thousand dollars, I think.
I remember what you were saying.
Yeah, something like that.
No.
The license was a lot of it.
The license, the plumbing license?
Plumbing license, you have to pull a permit.
Commercial work.
Paul didn't have it, and Lucas did.
Correct.
Work.
Thank you.
And it was done the next week, which happened to work out, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything, that's all we have for managers' report. Road foreman's report.
So, we've got all our grants closed out, now we're just basically waiting for approval and a check, except for, I'm waiting for a bill from Basens on Pigree Road, and then we got paperwork done, we just gotta file it once we get a bill. Went to the road foreman's meeting today, we discussed all kinds of things, from Craig's trucks to to buying sand and gravel, and everybody's going through the same thing with health, and so we're not isolated with all our problems, it's statewide thing, that makes anybody feel any better. Salt, I got some prices on salt, finally. So we've been buying it from Appalachia, which comes out of Albany, New York, and this year it's ninety-five seventy-five a ton for salt. I can get it from Cargill up in Rockingham for eighty-four fifty.
Cargill, C-A-R-G-I-L-L, is that?
That's correct, yep.
Have you pulled from them before?
I have not.
You're saying, everybody cares.
I have not, because of, not as good, but.
What, what was the price last year of the refreshment, remember?
Cargill wouldn't give us a price last year.
But what did you get the payment for this?
Last year, we paid eighty-two from Appalachia.
So this year, there would be actually less, you say?
They, they went to ninety-five.
They went to ninety-five, Appalachia did, last year it was eighty-two, Cargill this year is at eighty-four.
So what?
I was able to get in under the state's bid.
If you switch vendors, and we're gonna be close to what it was like. If you switch vendors, we're gonna be close to what it was last year.
That's what I'm saying, and uh. Yeah, but last year they wouldn't sell it to me. Because we typically do, that's delivered, all of them are delivered. Yeah, we don't pick up salt. Um, but. Um, a lot of problems and something else we discussed at this meeting. People having problems with it because it's, it's very clumpy. So a lot of times they get it in these big chunks and you've gotta screen it before you can use it, so. By the time you're done messing with that and you add that to your. You know. Eighty-four dollars, it could end up. We're gonna play it by year. We can still, if we. If it turns out that's not working out, we can always get it somewhere else. Um, the third price I got hold of American rock salt, which is out of. Um. Clermont, but they lost their shed in Clermont, they had a.
Barrett's actually bought them. Bought that out, Barrett's bought Dewboys, who, who Dewboys, no, not Fred. Barrett's bought. Um. The trucking part of that, I just can't think of the name, McDonald's bought. Dewboys Construction when they were the same, so that shed will. I assume be non-existent.
So, yeah, so Americans said they're hoping by next year at this time to be able to. Yeah, put their hat in the ring, but right now. We've only got two choices, so that's what they are. So, but for what we used for salt last year, that already that's a save of five thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Just by going.
Are you buying the same tonnage every year?
Ish. You know, it depends. Um, we get ice like we do, we end up using more salt than you would normally.
Never asked this before, so have you, spring comes. Are you taking less and less, you don't have to carry over, cause you really don't wanna carry it over, or how does that work?
What do you mean, no, no, soon as spring comes, we, we load the shed, I haul all the sand in.
It doesn't go bad.
It doesn't go bad, so right now, we're starting out this year, we've got all our sand is there, it was hauled in April. And our shed is full of salt. And. I have not touched my salt, my winter budget yet. For this year. But my plan is, is to start, I'm already looking into it, start hauling sand in right now. For the following year. Because you're never gonna get it as cheap as you are right now, it's only gonna get worse and you're not gonna, you know. So, and it's not gonna go bad. So that's.
You got room for it, huh?
That's what I'm thinking. Some came out of Garridge and some came out of Pelton's pit over in. Langdon, Langdon, thank you, yep.
Is that the new pit over by Paul Martin?
No, this, this pit isn't new, this pit's been.
There's a new pit over there.
No, I know his father had it, Rob was eighty-five years old, his father had it, where that.
Thank you.
Yep.
So you got?
That's, that's all I got, any important?
Can I ask a question again, road foreman's meeting, is it a local meeting, a state meeting?
No, it was um, put on by um, um. Wyndham Regional Commission. It was in Dover, it isn't, it's in Dover every year, so all the towns from. Wyndham County are there.
Yep, thank you, sure. Got it, thanks.
Good?
Yep, thanks.
Uh, anything else for old farmer's report, any questions? Thank you. Uh, executive session if needed, which I believe we do.
Motion to go in executive session to discuss contractual matters.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded by Craig to go in executive session to discuss a contractual matter at the end of the meeting. Uh, all of whom favor? Are you and I? Yeah, I have it. Boards, committees and commissions. Um, I assume Paul was gonna talk to this, but since he's not here, we have a um. Proposal. In our packet, um, uh, for the uh. Yeah, with the uh, speed signs. But I think it's a great idea personally. Um. Wanna read that, I don't know, I'm not.
I'll speak to it to a degree, I know, I believe that.
Oh, it's in that, it's in uh.
I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Um, but basically Susan Rebowski requested ARPA funds to be used for radar speed limit signs. Like the ones on Main Street and Route one twenty-one in Saxon River. On, or the ones near the Sutton Central School. She, her suggested locations were School Street. Near the Westminster Central School. Old Cemetery Road Route five. Westminster West Road in the Village of West West. And Kern Hatton Road at the edge of campus. Um. Which aren't there already signs, there are already signs there. And. She had done some research on costs. Chuck has done more research after our discussion with ARPA. With the ARPA committee. About this proposal and. We cannot put signs on Route five. But because of the state road. Um.
Even without permission?
They won't give you permission anymore, more than happen here.
Um.
You gotta look at that one.
There was discussion about. The state's little speed limit trailer. That came up at the last meeting, last select board meeting as well. Because that's available. For us to try to use for free, the state brings it in, state sets it up, state calls it out.
The state can put that on Route five.
They can put that on Route five. That's one of those things that. It's shared, so. We can have it as long as we can keep it for, depending on how much demand there is.
It's shared throughout the district.
Right.
And depending on the demand, depends on. They said you could have it for up to three or four months if anyone else wants it, or. You could only have it for a week. Alright.
So one of the thoughts was.
Didn't sound like there was a lot of demand for it.
Yeah.
We've had it before.
So it sounded, from our discussion, we were thinking, well, at the ARPA committee, maybe. We should try to reserve this trailer and see what the response is to it, because you put up a static deterrent and you leave it there and you don't move it. And you just. Get used to it and still speed past it, just like I do in Saxon River every day, so.
Certainly happens the same way.
Right, and Chuck also said that those. Speed limit signs that are at Kern Hatton require a lot of maintenance, so that would be. If that's something we looked into.
Those are hard, I believe, but those ones.
Right, for future use would be, okay, so who's gonna, who is responsible for maintaining it and the expensive?
You know, I like to see, to be honest with you, I hope, we've been discussing, we never have with the sheriff's department. I thought when we asked once, the sheriff's department said it really doesn't work, but. Before we went too far, I'd like to have the sheriff's department come back here. And say, is it really worth putting in or using them, because. They're the ones that are gonna have to, if, if they're ignoring it and say a joke, then we're wasting our time, if they say, yeah, we can use it. That obviously the people dealers being in, they're still picking them up, I like to see their input.
The sheriff's department. Speed limit. Trailer thing is shared between all the counties that they. Are contracted with, so we wouldn't have it. We don't get it for very long.
Right. But the ones that are permanent, I like to hear their input. And, and their input of where we're putting it. Like, hey, this is a good place to put it because we're always picking people up and we can't get them to slow down. I just would like their input. So, I, I think it's a good idea, I would.
I thought we got paid for all the speeders. Right, don't you want more?
I like the signs, I mean, I, I definitely go too fast through those same. Speed zones, but they do catch your attention.
They do, that's right.
They do.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but. I just thought if they came in and said, yes, we pick up people because they can't come back and say, oh, I didn't know all the speed, you just went through the sign.
Can I ask you a question on this? On this page where it says uh. Uh, where you had sent it to Paul about the um. Uh, the signs, those signs, the changeable message signs? Should not include advertising, animation, rapid flashing, is that referring to those same?
That's what it's referring to, yeah, some towns have them that say, you know, happy Halloween and it's flashing. Coming in to slow down. A blue light that pops up and starts whipping around, can't do that. That's according to the manual for uniform traffic control devices that. We all have to follow. Towns that do that are taking it upon themselves and if. Something happened that somebody had an accident, said, oh, it's because the sign is flashing.
Distracted or something.
They would actually. Have a leg to stand on. I just wanted to. Make everybody aware of this.
So I guess the question is, do we wanna go? Forward?
I can contact the state if that's something somebody, if that's something you guys wanna do, I can see if we can't.
I don't think it's free.
Put a hole on it?
See if we get any feedback at all?
Yes. You know, if you put one, say like. By Jim Mato's house here, he's always talking about people coming up over the hill flying and.
It's been there a lot.
Right, but it, but he's out there hearing when the brakes come on, or people accelerate, let us know, does it make a difference or not? You know?
Will the state put the trailer on any road, just to clarify, not just a state road?
It made a sound to me like they would. I would have to, I'll double check that, but when I, when I talked to Mark Pickering, it sounded like. He said they would bring it to your town, the first question was, can we put them up on Route five?
Right.
The first question was, can I put a mirror at the end of the. Tunnel, absolutely not. We'll take it down.
Okay.
I said, okay. So.
So if you buy these with ARPA money. Can you move them around or are they stationary forever in the same place?
The ones she's requesting are stationary.
Yeah, you, you have to determine what time you've got.
Right.
You gotta move it around, it's gotta be mobile.
We can have some backup.
I don't like them to begin with, I would say, my, my feedback is.
Well, maybe if you want it so.
If they were mobile, would it be better?
Well, that's what I'm saying, she's proposing two, four, six, seven or eight of them.
Right.
At twenty-five hundred dollars a piece, maybe you could buy two mobile.
Right.
I don't know, throwing it out there.
I don't know, I'd like to talk to somebody that's got mobile ones and find out what the maintenance of them are, find out.
Right.
What that entails, maybe they're great, maybe they're maintenance free, maybe. Once the circuit board goes to hell and I'm there, you gotta buy a new one.
Right, and then who, whose responsibility does it become? Highway charter responsibility, or is it?
This is a stupid question. Speed trap one with the bigger sign that has information so that. You can even use it for, like the road is closed up above, you know, on it, so that you're using for multi uses. You see what I'm saying?
I haven't seen a speed limit one that does.
I, that's what.
I can look into it. We can research that a little bit.
I mean, if you're going for ARPA money, that would be really nice to have one that's. Big lit. That this road is closed, or this road's under construction and slowed down, or whatever. Seems like we can use that. Especially with mobile.
Right, we need help.
Yeah. Run over this guy, we're really sure.
It would limit where you would, could put it. Because.
Oh, the size was, sure.
But.
You're good.
Uh, anything else, boards? That's alright.
No, I'm good, that's it.
Okay.
Chuck's on the trailer thing.
Anything else, boards, committees? Uh, other business, any other business at this time? Paul?
I think I know what you're here for. I don't have any answer for you.
As soon as he comes.
No, yeah, go ahead.
As soon as he comes back from hunting. I have an update. Yeah. He's off hunting.
Who's hunting?
Larry. Uh, is that where you go? So under other business, I, I, I don't, I don't know why we have this. Yeah, I have, we have a letter from the sheriff's office. Uh, I guess, well, that may be that's why we have it exactly addressed for us, town Westminster, attentive select board. To whom it may concern, we are ready to inform you that the Wyndham County Sheriff's Office rates for policing services for FY twenty twenty-four. Will be approximately the following. Fifty-two dollars per hour for contracts at, at least two thousand hours. Per year. Sixty-two dollars per hour for anything less than two thousand hours per year. Please accept these rates as being developed off our standard contract we normally provide, they include the cost of a deputy vehicle supervision and supplies. The final cost may differ based upon contract negotiations, if you have any questions or like to discuss this further, please don't hesitate to contact me. Mark Anderson, Wyndham County Sheriff's Office. I don't know what we ran out.
Yeah, but is, is he saying that they're, they're on a fiscal year that's not from July, it's from January, is what you're saying?
I'm not saying anything, I read it right off. Fiscal year twenty-four, I would say.
Which means it starts in January, even though our budget is going. Think that's what I'm saying.
That's a good point, we could clarify that.
Yeah, you're probably adding. Because we wouldn't have put enough money in.
Right.
Budget if we didn't know.
Let's just make sure, that's a good point.
I thought Allison said it was like sixty a month now for twenty hours, just like that.
But I can do it.
If you raise the rate for the hour, we just get less hours for that, because we only put so much money in.
Right, I can't be right, that's three hundred dollars an hour.
Well. It's six thousand dollars a month. Um.
For twenty hours?
Then. For, for a year, it's seventy-two thousand, so you're already talking that it will decrease of at least thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, I think we're at sixty-something is what they're in this budget for.
Actually more like. Forty thousand dollars, because we're under.
And what's their accountability when they contract for these hours, for you to actually know where they are? And what they're doing?
Their portal we're supposed to have access to, that. As of the last meeting, Ally did not have access to it, she was supposed to work on trying to get access to it, I don't know if she. Has access yet.
I thought she did at the last meeting.
Um, you can track where, you can see where the officers are. Basically, depending on. What they're, where they write tickets and things, so.
When they give us the bill, it does, when they bill us. What she's thought about is the life, like where are they, but then there's the bill, when we get the bill, it tells you that officer was. That date, the time, and, and it tells you where they were at.
Right.
General, like picking up speeders or a, a dispute.
It's pretty vague, really, the, the bill, it says, you know, patrols back from Minnesota, does that mean you drove it or you sat there for an hour?
Somebody knew what their schedule was, where, where they were gonna be.
I don't think the line all of them have any idea where they are, what they're.
Exactly.
They're supposed to be communicating, but.
But what, but I mean, I feel like we spend a lot of money on them and they don't really do anything. They're worthless and. And there's, I don't know that there's any real deterrent other than. Speeders, so if that's really what we wanna spend, is that really what everyone wants to spend their money on, it's. You know, speeders on a monthly basis?
Well, they make money with speeders. That's, that's what I was just gonna say, if you pull somebody over for speeding, they make money on. We, they're gonna go deliver a letter of. Whatever to the junkyard. They're getting an hourly rate for that, but they're not making any money. You know, so there's an incentive for them to do that versus. But it's other stuff.
When they first started, we actually. When I first started with them, when I was here, no. They won't say, it was forty-five thousand dollars was their contract and they brought in forty-seven thousand dollars worth of tickets to us. But a couple of things happened, one is the whole. System changed, where all of a sudden we're getting less and less and then they were taking out a court fee, then they were taking out other fees, so. When the ticket got done, it was a hundred and fifty dollar ticket, we used to get a hundred of it and we're down to like last time, you'd be like forty dollars. They still get their fee, but it is their cost. So in the court cost. So what started out to be that you could pick up a picker and actually make money. We get all done is really not worth the time and energy, but. That's what they're doing, but what originally started, they would come. Once a week at least and see the town manager, what's the issue, where do you want us to go, what do you want us to do? That was an ideal situation and we just don't seem to have it every.
I feel like that's what they should, yeah, they should contact and say, where are we getting complaints?
Yep.
Is this road heavy now or not, and that's when they should focus their. Is it this road heavy now or not, and that's when they should focus their time, not just arbitrarily pick up, yeah, the road.
Tell the manager, say, I'm gonna be here Monday once in.
Exactly, that, a little communication, I think will go a quick and long way.
Yeah, I guess my question is, is, is their function? Basically just traffic, is that it?
No, they patrol, they do.
Do, do they do any crime prevention whatsoever?
That's the best way to put it, their job is to try and prevent it, they don't wanna do prime investigation, so if there's a crime. I'll throw Allen Brothers out, they're supposed to monitor Allen Brothers in all the places first. Soon as there's something happen, they don't wanna be involved because they get, it takes hours of investigation and get paid, but then they turn it over to state police. So same thing when I was on it, where they threatened, they wouldn't even do a car accident, because once they're at the car accident, they're gonna investigate the car accident. What they kinda agreed to that with a car accident, they would show up. To monitor the accident, but they're gonna wait for the state police to come in to take over, to do the investigation of what it is. So kinda like, like you said, they're, they're supposed to be monitoring and checking things out, but they're not coming to the town manager to find out, hey. But the other thing is, what we were complaining about was, we wanted them to come back and tell us, hey, we didn't know that they've been going out on, on Pick My Road, back west minister road. For issues and, well, why would you want us to know, so if the neighbors call and ask. You can at least play to them, yes, they've been there, they've been trolling it and they're having none of it, so we're not blindsided into the town. Office too, that they would know what's going on. But we're just not getting one.
No, they're not real, not real responsive, I don't disagree with you, there's a lot of money for what we're getting out of it and.
We're no accountability.
Who can call for protection?
You.
I'm just saying, but, so somebody breaks in your house at two AM, where you gonna talk?
Better swear I'm in the account for that.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Right. Yeah.
Uh, any other, other, any other, other business at this time? I'll make a note that you came for Ally and uh, just follow, I'll have her follow up.
For sure.
Yep.
And I'll make sure it's been left open, I'll let you know right away.
I commend the sheriff for keeping this cool.
Uh. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh. Steve?
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Date of the next meeting, November ninth, twenty twenty-two, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. And at this time, we'll go into our executive session.